We'll call the city council meeting to order for Tuesday, January 16th, 2024. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Hoyt.
Here.
Councilmember Bernatz.
Here.
Councilmember Lean.
Here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
All right, are there any changes to the agenda?
None.
None.
Steve, Katie, Holly, Nick. Seeing no changes to the agenda, we look for a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Katie, second by Steve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to our announcements, item 5.1 is a resolution accepting the donation from Midwest Bank to the Rambling River Center. Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are excited to be here this evening to accept a very generous donation from Midwest Bank. In our December Rambling River Center Advisory Board meeting, Neil Anderson, who is the market president for Midwest Bank here in Farmington, showed up to our meeting and presented a $50,000 check, that's right, $50,000 check, to build an outside patio. Unfortunately, only Missy and I were at this meeting, so we wanted to share a little something with you so we could relive it together.
Hey, Farmington, on Monday, December 11th, Neil Anderson, market president of Midwest Bank, stopped by our advisory board meeting and gave us a little surprise.
During COVID, you guys did a lot of stuff outside because you couldn't be inside as much. And you had this area out here, which was kind of a nice grassy area, but would be great to have a patio someday. And I know there's kind of a master planning process going through with the city and with the money from the federal government to redo a lot of the Rambling River Center, which is great. But one thing it sounded like that wasn't on there was the need for a patio. So what we talked to with the city is it would be great if they could find a partner to help fund and pay for.
Oh my God.
So the bank is going to provide $50,000, and that should be enough, based on talking, that will pay for the whole patio. And we think it will be a great addition to your facility, and we hope you guys all get a chance to do that.
Let me tell you that their generosity made our talkative advisory board speechless. Thank you so much, Midwest Bank. We are grateful for your ongoing support and look forward to enjoying a beautiful day outside with everyone here on our new patio. Once again, we are reminded that one of the best reasons for living in Farmington is the support residents and businesses give to the Rambling River Center. We appreciate their support of our programs and services as we continue our mission to engage adults over age 50 in the Farmington community. From everyone here at the Rambling River Center, thank you.
With that, I'd like to invite Neil up here tonight so they can be formally recognized and thanked for their very, very generous donation to the Rambling River Center to build an outdoor patio. With that, I'll turn it over to Neil.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the council to invite us here. That's very generous of you to invite us to share this news. The bank sees part of its main mission, Midwest does, to invest in the communities that it's a part of. So this is just a natural process for us, making sure that we can invest not only in the senior center, but anything else that we can do to kind of help the community grow. So we're pleased to be able to do this donation. And I think I shared with the city a letter, which it's a multi-year donation, so I think 17,000 was received in 2023, there'll be another 17,000 in 2024, and then the balance will be paid out in 2025. But I think that should timeline okay with the construction of the patio. But we're looking forward to sharing a cocktail or a coffee or something on the patio when that's finally open. But thank you, and I'm glad that they'll hopefully get great use out of this.
It's picture time.
So we have the majority of our Rambling River Center Advisory Board here tonight to accept the check from Neil and Midwest Bank.
And Neil, we look forward to sharing a cocktail or coffee on the Midwest Bank patio with
you as well.
Don't go running off yet, Neil. We got one second here. Nick, anything to add?
I think membership fees are covered by that, just so you know. Somewhere closer to 50, so you added some zeros.
All right.
Honest mistake, though. Thank you.
Yep.
No, we're just so grateful to the way that you approach community and for your generous heart, so that's all I have. It's fantastic.
Thank you.
Katie?
As long as there's lemon bars with the coffee.
Need something sweet.
Thank you so much.
You know, I think what's awesome, and thank you so much, I think what's really awesome about Midwest Bank is there's a lot of organizations out there that say they, you know, they're a partner with the community and work with the community, but maybe, you know, fall a little bit short in that regard, and you live up to your expectation, your statement, and then beyond that. So very much appreciate your partnership and collaboration with us.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for all your hard work and dedication to the city. I know sometimes the time and energy you get put in doesn't get recognized, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you, sir. And, you know, my peers said it very well, you know, this community, it takes a village, right? And there's so many different components of it, from volunteerism to, you know, resident input, stakeholder feedback. But truly, at the end of the day, like, it's a harsh reality that money makes things go around. And, you know, the consistent contributions by many of the businesses. And in this case, you know, stepping, recognizing the need, stepping up and filling where a need existed, and yet there was still a void, it's just, it's humbling. It's humbling to continue to have community partnerships that allow things to be experienced by so many. And so this is going to be an incredible year for the Rambling River Center, and might have to drag my Traeger over there and do some ribs or something on the patio. We find a way to make it work, so we appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
We look for a motion to adopt the resolution 2024-08, accepting a donation of $17,000 from Midwest Bank to the Rambling River Center.
Motion.
Second.
A motion by Holly, second by Katie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll move on to item six, which is our citizen comments. This time is reserved for citizen comments regarding any non-agenda items. If there's anyone in attendance wishing to speak, feel free to come up to the podium at this time. All right, if we have none, we will move on to item seven, which is our consent agenda. Any changes or amendments to the consent agenda?
Not a change, but I am going to abstain from the consent agenda, my business furnished services to the city for payment. I do believe that contract price is lower than prices from other sources for the produced items, so I'm just going to step back from that one.
Thank you. Any other changes?
None.
All right. At this time, I'm going to pull item seven, eight, which is the fire service agreement. I'm going to pull that for further conversation. If there's no other changes, then we would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of items seven, eight.
I will make a motion with those amendments.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Nick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And an abstention?
Abstain.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on, we have item 10, Tac 1, under our petitions, which is the final plat, PUD for Meadowview Preserve. Tony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, before you this evening is the final plat for the first edition of Meadowview Preserve. This final plat consists of 63 single-family lots. It is consistent with the preliminary plat approval that was given last year, which included 138 single-family lots over the 61 acres, had a net density of 3.12 acres. The minimum lot area proposed for the development is 8,119 square feet, and then the average lot area of all lots within the development will be 9,659 square feet. The minimum lot width and depth proposed is 60 feet and 130 feet respectively. The properties zoned R1 planned unit development. The setbacks are as follows: the front yard, 20 feet; side yard, six; side corner, 20; and rear yard, setback of six feet. This plat does contain two outlots labeled A and B. Outlot A is a combination of wetland, floodplain, and stormwater ponding. This outlot will be deeded to the city as part of this final plat. And then outlot B is future development. Up here on the screen is the copy of the proposed final plat. It's basically the southern half of the existing parcel, so you have 195th Street to the south, very northern edge is 190th Street right of way. There are two access points to this first phase, those being 193rd Street West from the Troy Hill Development, and then 195th Street to the south. Everfield Avenue extends from 195th Street straight north through the development. The Everfield Avenue consists of a 60-foot right-of-way and 32-foot wide roadway. And then there's Everglade Path, which branches off of Everfield Avenue towards the southern end of the development, and then runs north along the west side of the property. Everglade Path consists of a 60-foot right-of-way and a 28-foot wide roadway. The portion of 193rd Street that will be planted as part of this initial phase consists of an 80-foot right-of-way and a 42-foot wide roadway, and that's consistent with what exists in the Troy Hill Development to the east. Both Everfield Avenue and Everglade Path will end with temporary cul-de-sacs to allow for vehicle turnaround, and obviously, they will be extended with the future phases of the development. The plat is adjacent to 195th Street, which is County Road 64, and because of this, it is subject to the county's contiguous plat ordinance. The Plat Commission did review this final plat at their December 6th, 2023 meeting. They did approve the final plat, and it was conditioned upon the access at 195th Street being restricted. That restriction is a right-in, right-out with a raised median constructed in 195th Street. There will also be a right-turn lane installed as part of this development as well. As far as parks, trails, and sidewalks, with this particular development, the city will see cash and move of parkland. Sidewalks are shown on the south and west side of Everglade Path and the west side of Everfield Avenue, Batumis Trail shown in outlot A. This trail does connect into the existing trail in 195th Street. Trail is also provided on the south side of 193rd Street West as a continuation of the existing trail in Troy Hill. This will be a planned unit development. Attached in your packet is a copy of the draft planned unit development agreement. There are essentially two deviations proposed for this planned unit development. The first one is reduce lot size to that minimum 8,119 square feet. The R1 zone typically requires a minimum of 10,000 square feet for lots, so a little bit less, but not as less as we've approved in the past. And then the second deviation is reduce lot width to a minimum of 60 feet, where the R1 zone typically requires 75 feet minimum. The developer has reviewed the agreement, and they do find it acceptable. The engineering department has reviewed the final plat, and they do recommend approval upon satisfaction of all engineering comments, those comments related to the construction plans for grading utilities, as well as the application entering into a development contract with the city, and that all security fees and costs paid. Plating Commission did review the final plat and PUD agreement at its regular meeting on January 9th. They did recommend approval of both with a 4-0 vote. Therefore, the action that's requested this evening is to adopt the attached resolution approving the final plat and PUD agreement for Meadowview Preserve contingent upon following: number one, satisfaction of all engineering comments related to the construction plans for grading and utilities; and number two, a development contract between the developer and city of Farmington shall be executed, and security fees and costs shall be paid. Submission of all other documents required under the development contract shall be required.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Katie?
Just a really quick question, and forgive me, because I'm trying to quickly find the answer to this without asking, but I'll just go ahead and ask. So for eastbound traffic on 195th to get into the development, will that be left-turn lane? Will there be any bypass lane? As far as, I'm just thinking around like the super-busy times, specifically with like high school letting out, and obviously, the majority of southbound traffic is now heading that way, you know, heading north to go east. And so I'm just trying to think of, is there going to be times of major backup, or are...
For any eastbound traffic, they will either have to do one of two things. They can cut over on Everest Path and then go through 193rd Street into the development, or you could go to the roundabout at Pilot Knob, come back around, and then take the right turn into the development.
Okay. And just specifically, I guess, for those that are trying to bypass any left turn?
There will not be a left turn into that development. It'll be a right-in, right-out only.
Only, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Steve?
So Tony, I've got a question about 193rd Street. So when the northern portion of this development is finalized, it's really going to be 190th and 193rd and 195th, so those would all end up being access points, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So have the residents on 193rd been kind of kept up to date as to what's going on here? Because they've kind of enjoyed a very peaceful cornfield, you know, almost, you know, small-town in the country.
Well, they certainly came out at the public hearing when this was held. Final plat unfortunately does not require a public hearing.
Correct.
I know there have been a number of individuals who've come in and talked to me about the property, but I have not noticed them of this, per se.
So obviously, the Development Review Committee looked at this, and police and fire are comfortable with, okay. What about larger vehicles like garbage? Do we know if there's a safe through the development with garbage trucks as well? I mean, is that going to be an issue?
I don't believe that'll be an issue. I think John might.
Yeah, Mayor and councilmembers, the temporary turnarounds will be sized in order to accommodate both emergency and typical garbage vehicles, and we're not anticipating any problems. I would note from your previous question, the developer has been grading the site since this fall, so there has been quite a bit of activity out there, so the residents are probably very aware something's happening.
Yep. All right, thank you. Nick?
Was, the county did a traffic study on this with the initial plat, right? Or did they do one with the final plat as well?
The county, I don't know that they did an official traffic study.
Oh, I thought that was required with 195th. I guess my question is around Everest Path, just to the east there, have they ever indicated what type of changes may be made there if density increases in that area?
I don't think there will be any changes there. That's always scheduled as a full access. I don't believe that there's any anticipated changes that would be required there to the specific intersection.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my recollection from the Plat Commission discussion and discussion with county engineering staff. They always reserve the right to make changes on any county road for safety purposes, but we've heard nothing, no changes proposed for that location.
Well, the reason I'm saying is, I think, my memory may be wrong, but I think that intersection is specifically called out in the comp plan as being the, right after the Flagstaff and 50, it was one of the second most, call it concerning intersection, right? So I guess my thought was, if we're increasing traffic to that area, I mean, is there any thought that should be put into that intersection as well to help kind of alleviate some of those concerns? But...
Ultimately, that would be a county decision.
I understand, that's why I was kind of asking if they had done a study of this to kind of estimate that impact.
From what we've, we haven't heard anything from the county, so as far as we know that there's no concern on the county's end with that intersection with the development of this parcel.
Okay. Just to add to that, the county has, the county has, over the last few years, on an annual basis, has been monitoring traffic on Flagstaff and 195th. Those numbers are like 9100 vehicles a day on 195th, and then that portion of Flagstaff, because that's 64, and it's part of their future transportation plan, but that number hasn't moved much. So it's been like 9,070 to 91 and change. Just to add to the point that you had started to make was that when the northern portion of this development is done, there's a second phase, we will have to extend 190th to the west, and the county already knows that they're going to have to start looking at traffic on Pilot Knob and 190th for some type of alternative control, whether it's roundabout, stoplight, or something. And it was all going to be driven by the development. This just happens to be the first piece, but the county, they're obviously aware of it and watching those pieces. Yeah.
Thank you. Nothing else from me.
All good. Anything else to add?
No.
All right. Anything?
Oh, just a note of appreciation of our flexibility, right? We have minimum lot size requests requirements, but sometimes to make things work, we have to put on our flexibility hats, so I think that's a good use of, you know, working with developers to be able to get things done. And we've talked now a few times over about the road thing, and I just, I know it's been said, and I want to say it again, whether or not we feel right-in, right-out is ideal, or if there should be a left turn, or if there should be a left bypass, or anything like that, it's ultimately not up to the city to make those decisions. That comes from a county level. And so, you know, our hope, of course, is that county's also doing their due diligence and all of that work to make sure that this is happening, but I just want to make sure that we reiterate the point that it's not for us to decide. And so we might all have our opinions on whether we should have turn lanes, or whether we should have a left turn access coming from the east, but we don't get to decide that in this particular situation.
Correct.
So that's really it for me.
Tony, the only, actually, the questions that I had, we do have representation here. I'm going to direct this more at you. Granted, it's 63 homes, and there is limited access to the site through 195th or 193rd, but there's two questions here. Number one, what is the staging plan for the concrete divider that'll be put on 195th that'll ultimately turn it into a right-in, right-out? At what point is that going to be fully constructed and change the traffic? Is it at a certain percentage? Did the county require that before the first house is built? Like, help us understand when that's going to be constructed, because that ties into the second question I have, and piggyback a little bit on Steve there with 193rd. So yes, it was future-through-street. It's the future, and now this development is happening, but if that, if that intersection, or if at 195th it's restricted, can we prevent construction traffic, specifically heavy loads and larger vehicles, from using 193rd to Everest to lessen that disturbance to the residents, and then continue to communicate not only with the residents of 193rd and Everest, but also with the school? As Meadowview has peak traffic, high school traffic will back up through that roundabout at Flagstaff and 195th at, you know, 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning, and 3:00 to 4:30 in the afternoon. There's just the potential for a major conflict of, when can I turn? Who has right-of-way? I just want to make sure we have a clear and concise plan on how we're going to address that and stage it appropriately through the progress of the project if we can.
Sure.
So there's a question there, but long-winded.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I'm Brian Tucker with Summergate. Yeah, we'll certainly coordinate that with the city, city engineer and the county. My assumption was that that median is going to go in with the initial construction. So access should be fine during construction of the development. Where it gets tricky is, you know, this will probably be two, three years of home building, and so you still have a lot of, you know, construction traffic coming in, in and out after the initial development is built. So, yeah, it's going to take some coordination, but our understanding is the median would go in pretty much right-of-way with the initial development.
Right. Okay. And that's what I assumed, was it was going to be part of the early phases. And then just, I just want to stress this so much, that with that in there, eastbound traffic, 195th, north on Everest, west on 193rd, especially in the summer months and when it gets nice out, there's a lot of kids, there's aged trees, there's the potential for problems. So the best we reasonably can, try and restrict the construction traffic to 195th.
Correct.
And if that is a little bit longer of a drive, whatever it is, I mean, you won't have school to contend with over the summer months, but just, that can go south really quick, and we can control it, so do the best that we can, please.
Sure. And Mayor, we do have a similar project with similar concerns, and, you know, we put up signs of no construction traffic and that type of thing. Now, obviously, it's a sign, and it can be ignored, but it does help to at least bring awareness so that folks find an alternative if they work at it.
We'll hear if they're ignoring the signs. I promise you, you'll hear about it, so, to get in front of that, right? That's, yeah, so, okay. If there's no other comments, I would look for a motion to adopt the attached resolution approving the final plat and PUD agreement for Meadowview Preserve contingent on the two mentioned action items.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Holly. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bernatz.
Yes.
Councilmember Lean.
Yes.
Councilmember Porter.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt.
Yes. Thank you, sir. And Kelly, your representatives here?
Yep.
Good, okay. Moving on to agenda item number 12 under New Business is the Rambling River Center Facility Master Plan. Kelly.
Mayor, you said it earlier tonight, this is going to be an exciting year for the Rambling River Center, and it is going to be an exciting year for the Rambling River Center. The Rambling River Center moved into its current location in 2009. This was the former city hall, police station, fire station, and a library. The building was built in 1969. It was remodeled as the Rambling River Center with volunteer labor and fundraising dollars. At that time, we had a piece of paper, and we drew this sketch of what the plan should look like, or what we wanted it to look like. We were very excited to move into a much larger space with many more rooms, so we never did a formal facility design for that space. The facility has worked well over the last 15 years, as both a senior center and as a rental facility. However, over the last several years, there's been much discussion about remodeling, making the entryway more inviting. We have some weird hallways and nooks and crannies, and we still have jail cells and all of that. So looking at it, beginning in 2020, 2020, the Rambling, one of the Rambling River Center's advisory board goal was to have a facility master plan, to reconfigure the spaces for improvements and programming opportunities. This board, in 2021, we toured four different senior centers. We went to Apple Valley, we went to Hastings, we went to Northfield, and we went to one other that I'm, Northfield. And we saw what we liked, what we didn't like, but we wanted to show them what it could look like, and have them get a feel for each of the different senior centers. In addition to the need for the master plan, as you're aware, in fiscal year 2023, the Rambling River Center was awarded a $750,000 grant. When we applied for the grant, we applied for $3.7 million. We're very happy with $750,000, but obviously not... We're very happy with seven hundred and fifty thousand, but obviously not enough money to do everything that was in that twenty eighteen study for the Rambling River Center Plaza and exterior areas, or interior areas. Thus, in September, we were fortunate enough to be able to hire JLG Architects to develop a facility master plan for us and with us. The project meeting, or the, the, uh, project kicked off in early October. End of October, we had an input meeting at the Rambling River Center, we invited members, we invited user groups, um, anybody who used this space, we invited them to this meeting. Based on this input, um, other things that JLG looked at, facility observations, programs and participations, they came out with a building layout option with several variations. Staff looked at it, we, we took what we liked, what we thought worked well, what might not work well, and they, uh, put it together in one proposed concept plan. That's the concept plan you'll review tonight. This concept plan was presented to both the Rambling River Center Advisory Board and the Parks and Recreation Commission at their December meetings. Both groups really liked the plan, are in favor of the proposed, uh, um, improvements. Uh, one of the groups, uh, one of the members says, this is a champion plan, um, they very much, uh, liked the plan. We also shared it with staff, we shared it with building inspections, we shared it with fire, we shared it with police, if they had any concerns, and those were addressed by JLG in this concept as well. We're excited to have Pam here tonight, um, she is going to present the project goals and the objectives, the overview of the existing spaces, the proposed concept plan, phases and cods, or cost estimates. So with that, I will turn it over to Pam, and it looks like I've skipped a few slides. There we go.
Awesome, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, uh, I, again, I'm Pam Anderson with JLG Architects, I'm a senior principal. I've been doing this work for a long time, and this has really, you know, I do projects large and small, but it's really exciting to work with a group that is so engaged and so excited about a project. So this is, this has really been fun, uh, to work with this group. As we, as, uh, as we said, there's a, a number of goals here with this project. The building has great bones, I would say, and has served them well for the last number of years, but I think that there's, you know, we really identified a number of things that could be improved to make this building work much better. And what we really wanted to do is talk about, you know, making this a more open and inviting environment for the seniors. The exterior, the interior, the entries are a bit confusing, because there's two entries on the front, obviously from its former uses. We want it to be, you know, more visibility within the space, there's a lot of, as we talked about, nooks and crannies, hallways that are a little bit confusing, you can't really see what's going on, accessibility would be important to improve. We want to accommodate flexibility in programming, um, they do a lot of activities here, and in the report, we included, um, this month's, uh, program of activities. There's a lot of stuff going on here, a lot of great stuff, and we want to be able to accommodate what's going on today and what might happen in the future. Creating better lounge space for interaction, it's really important when people come in that there's places for coffee and conversation. This is gonna tie nicely also with that next piece, which is connection to the outdoors, so that wonderful, uh, gift that was given to the city here to allow us to, to move forward with the plaza and the patio space for the, for the Rambling River Center, it's really exciting. And then fitness facilities, they do have a fitness center, it's really small, um, so the opportunity to sort of expand and provide better fitness facilities, and then, of course, things like single-occupant restrooms, which weren't on anyone's radar a number of years ago, but really important, uh, moving this forward. So just a really brief, um, intro to the existing spaces, most of the folks have probably been in this space, but as we said, the, the front entry is a little bit confusing, it's really too tight at the main reception desk. When you come in, people are trying to check in, others are trying to pass by. They have an activity space that's very heavily used, uh, the office, though, is tight, you have to, like, the director's office, you actually have to, the supervisor's office, you have to actually go through the activity space to get to her office, there's no way to get there. A lot of the spaces are very closed off, so you can't see what's going on inside, and I think the excitement is being able to see activities and things that are going on inside the space. Uh, as we said, the, the activity, uh, fitness space is really tight, there's, there's machines in there, but not enough room for stretching or other activities. We have a game room, there's, you see the ping pong table there, uh, that, that doubles as a hallway, so the only way to get to the, the west end of the building is to actually walk through the ping pong room, uh, to get there. And the other room you have to walk through is actually the one you see in the picture on the right here, which is sort of their coffee area. So you walk through the hallway that's the kitchen, through the ping pong room to get to the train room, which is really the kind of fun stuff that's going on here. We do also have identified, there's a four-stall garage in there, so that might provide some opportunities for expansion, so when we looked at that, we thought that was important. The main banquet room is wonderful, very nice, very well-used space, great space to be able to rent out to the community. Uh, but there are some things that need to be addressed there, some acoustical control. We've got a number of, again, it's kind of small rooms that existed from years past that need to be consolidated to provide more efficient storage. Uh, we have a history room, there's some wonderful historical elements that are in a room that's kind of tucked away, again, on the far end of that activity center, that banquet space, no one gets to see those items. The kitchenette, that was kind of installed later, so the walls don't all the way go all the way up to the ceiling, so there's a lot of sound control issues. If you're having an event and someone's banging around in the kitchen area, you're gonna hear all that. And then, as we said, there's no access to that wonderful green space, so now we're gonna have the opportunity to get to that space. So this is sort of an overall of the proposed plan, we're talking about relocation of the main entry, improving the circulation in the building, just making it much clearer for the circulation, adding those kinds of important social spaces, uh, expanding some program spaces, increasing flexibility, and then enhancing that green space outside, so I'll kind of run through. Uh, this is sort of the south half of the building, I thought it's easier to see it, we zoom in on it a little bit. What you see here is, right now, there are two entries to the building, the building further to the right, the one to the right, um, is the current main entry to the building. What we are proposing is actually flipping this and using the other main entry, I think it actually, it went right into the old council chambers that they're using as the fitness space right now. Uh, what that does is it allows straight views all the way through the facility, it allows us to ver, create a much more open area where we can create a bigger space for the, for the folks coming in, to be able to check in for programming, there'd be an office there at the front. And then we'd have some lounge space right there, so you can see people, you can see some activities, meet and greet, have some coffee, and that would be right at the heart of this whole facility. We're also looking at, uh, they have, right now, a library that's kind of constructed within, this, yeah, there's a library right now that's kind of constructed into the corner of this multipurpose room. We would take that out and actually be able to relocate that library space over where their office and reception currently is. Uh, and then we can expand that area, so we get a multipurpose space and a game room, now we can move the ping pong table over, we'll have room for a pool table, and be able to enclose that, because it's kind of some noisy activity sometimes. The other wonderful thing is, uh, as we make this the new main entry coming into the space and create, again, much clearer circulation, this also, what we're proposing is taking three stalls of that four-stall garage, we'd leave one for the, for the van. Uh, the other three stalls would be able to convert into their new fitness space, and that would make their fitness space about, you know, seventy percent larger than it currently is, so it's really gonna improve the use of that. We'd also add another, we'd also be able to add a single-occupant, uh, toilet, uh, adjacent to that as well. And the other thing is just being able to open up those hallways, we now will have access back to where their train room is, that, that group is an amazing group, the setup there is amazing, it's a great space to be able to bring, uh, kids and grandkids into, to share with, uh, folks in that train room area. Other things, well, let's go on to the sort of north half of this. Uh, the north half of this, again, um, what we have is this storage area that's sort of chopped up right now into a number of small rooms, that would be consolidated to provide better table and chair storage. The banquet room would remain mostly as it is, uh, what we do want to try and get into this, though, is another single-occupant restroom, all-gender restroom, uh, is important, and that way, this area actually could be, um, kind of divided off from the remainder of the building, so if you want to lease this space without having to have access to the remainder of the building, we now could do that, because we would have enough toilet facilities to serve that area independently, and that sort of shifts the kitchen up. Then we also get that opportunity to put a couple of doors in and get access to that outdoor patio, and be able to enhance some of that green space that is out there. So, of course, one of the big questions always is, so what's it going to cost? Uh, when we developed the plan, we were asked to sort of look at it in terms of maybe phasing it. You know, if we don't know if we can come up with enough funds to do it all at once, we were gonna look at it in a number of phases. So Phase 1A is really sort of the, the meat of the majority of the, the renovations. We are looking at doing areas, and these are the ones that are sort of boxed in red, so this is that area in the, uh, banquet center, uh, being able to do that exterior work, uh, again, on that outdoor patio and green space. Uh, we'd take care of a little vestibule, there's another vestibule coming in from the west here where the, the doors are in very poor condition. We would take care of those, and then, of course, we'd take care of this kind of main part of the complex, which is developing that new main entry, new reception lounge area, getting that single-occupant toilet in, and turning that garage into the fitness space. Uh, so the total on that, that phase, we call it Phase 1A, is just over a million dollars. We would also propose and need to do some exterior work, once we relocated that main entry. We're sort of proposing to take care of some exterior work, because obviously now we don't need three, four driveways going into there. It would be nice if we could remove some of the concrete that's in the front of that building, be able to get some landscaping and soften up some of the front of that space. Probably put a covering over that main entry, the one thing that that building has never had is something that creates a little bit of a canopy, uh, some shade structure to the front of that building, uh, just to sort of enhance that main entry. So that part, we're calling Phase 1B, that's coming in at a hundred and eighty, eight thousand, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. And then we have, uh, three additional phases, so Phase 2 is sort of the area we're located here in yellow, so that's really just this limited area of taking care of the remainder of the banquet space. So it's relocating that kitchen area and creating that second, uh, single-occupant toilet room, uh, that's coming in at about ninety-one thousand dollars. Phase 3 would be sort of the remainder of the activity space, this is the one that's surrounded in green here. So we create a hallway, going back to the offices, we get that game room in here, we create this, uh, update this sort of multipurpose room. The nice thing is, we're actually proposing to put a divider in it, too, so that you could use it as one large space or two smaller spaces, because oftentimes they have multiple activities going on at the same time. We'd also then add this sort of library space and make a connection back to the building here as well. Uh, that Phase 3 is a little bit more work, that's at three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And then Phase 4 is just sort of the last little bit here, it's surrounded in the blue, this is sort of our train room area. This is the area we talked about, has the, currently has the old holding cells from the jail in there. Uh, we'd like to just be able to clear all of that out, make sure we cap the plumbing and sort of open up that area so that the, that activity space is a little bit more open as well, and that one's sixty-five thousand. So really, all in, if we were to just sort of add these up all as individual phases, it comes in at just over one point eight million dollars. So, questions, folks, now? There's a lot to run through.
No, we appreciate it very much. Nick, questions?
I'll start, start on that side.
Steve started a lot, all right, Katie, you wanna start?
Oh, this is a lot to digest.
It is.
I don't know that I have initial questions other than, um, timeframe of phases, and that might be, that might be in here that I haven't seen yet, is there any point where the entirety of, I mean, I assume that's the advantage of phases, is that the entirety of the building would not need to be shut down for construction?
So there's sort of two approaches you could take to this, and, and this gets to be, you know, the, the decision is really, some of it'll come down to money. The timing on this comes down to money, right? Everything comes down to money. If there's funds available, it, it probably would be more ideal to design and develop this as a single project, bid it as a single project, and it could still be constructed sort of in multiple phases. I mean, the challenge is, of course, I'm sure that the senior center would like to have access to some of the space, we know that there's gonna be renovations going on, but to remain operational while this is going on, it would be easier to sort of phase it, at least in a couple of phases here, to, to be able to have access to some of the building at some, sometimes. We did divide the cost up like we did, because, of course, we didn't know what kind of funding was available. They knew they had this initial, uh, grant money that has come in, uh, but the additional funding, you know, to, to get to this full project may not be there at this time.
I don't know that I have other initial questions, I mean, this is extraordinarily exciting, thank you so much for, yeah, very fun group to work with, we, we know that from experience.
Very fun, very fun group to work with.
So, the, the potential here is, is just very exciting, um, but I, I don't know that I have other questions, I'm sure there will be some that come up throughout the process here, but, thank you.
Yeah.
Steve? Okay, so, you laid out, really nice presentation, by the way. You laid this out by phases, so, you know, we haven't discussed timing with this part of it yet, um, but, let's say it was done as a totality, it, you know, and essentially paid for, bonded, however, mechanism we want to use for it. How does that change the cost in your estimation? Does it drop by a quarter of a million, half a million, hundred thousand?
You know, I, I would, it, to be, uh, you know, you'd like to be optimistic, I, I don't know that, you know, you might have that hundred thousand to two hundred thousand or more. I think there is some, definitely some advantages, I'd say, probably easily, we could say, ten percent of the cost comes down by being able to do it in one phase. It's always more complicated if we have to develop, you know, a bid package, get a contractor on board, develop a bid package, get a different, maybe a different contractor. The problem now you get into is multiple contractors, y, you might have these things one right after the other, you might have them years apart. It, it does get complicated, so I would say you could probably save at least ten to fifteen percent.
Yeah, I mean, that,
By doing this all alone.
You actually just pointed out a few, a few additional thoughts I had, too, which is, you know, every contractor has a different approach, different strategy.
Yeah.
And if they come in and ABC Company is replacing XYZ Company, they're gonna say, well, you know, that contractor did it a little bit differently than I would have, and then you've got different, yeah, it just feels, it feels messy like that.
It does, it does get very messy, yes.
Kelly, this is more of a question for you, because you were here, I believe, during this time period, if I'm not mistaken.
I was.
So, we, as a council at that time, placed kind of a high priority to see how much local contractors we could work with, or, you know, I think there's some, um, late but fondly remembered members who actually had a part in construction, too. Do we have that same opportunity here, or do we have to follow the standard bid process? What is that? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yep.
Again, I, I'm, I'm projecting ahead the financing piece of it, but if it involved that part of it?
Right, yeah, in two thousand nine, a lot of it was done with volunteer labor, Missy and I talked about that today. Obviously, we'd want to run it by Ress, Kim and, and Julie, but yeah, a lot of that was done knocking down the walls. We do think that our staff can do the demo, like, we're ready to demo those vestibules like tomorrow. I didn't say that, did I? Maybe next week, but we do think our staff can do a lot of the demolition.
Yeah. Sounds good. Okay, well, I guess overall, I mean, I really, I can't express my appreciation, appreciation enough to the Rambling River Center Board who's here, and, I mean, uh, just the finest people you'd ever want to meet, um, and so much passion for wanting to, you know, really invest in the space that they spend a lot of time in. I became a member about a year ago, and, um, every time I walk in the building, it just makes me very happy, and I feel, you know, I, I just feel a joy being in there and interacting with, with the folks, so I, I think this is a really exciting time period for this segment of the community, and I think also, I think a part that shouldn't be missed either, is, um, you know, there's opportunities, I think, as we grow here to, I guess, broaden the, um, demographic that might find this space valuable, um, which I think this does, too, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Me?
Yep.
Okay.
Nick wanted to go last, so.
I didn't say last.
Super exciting, I, I love looking at floor plans, so this, uh, this is right up my alley. With that in mind, I have a couple of things, um, first is, First is, it actually has to do with safety. For me, I, I look at this and I think of it in phases, and, and the ability to use parts of the facility while still doing construction on other parts. And first thing that comes into my mind is, are Rambling River Center members and/or visitors, is it a safe space for them to be in? And I know that ultimate care is going to be taken for that, but it leads me to the second thought is, do we need to consider looking for alternative locations for some of the things that you all enjoy to make sure that there's not, you know, sheet rock dust, that's what I know, right? Sheet rock dust here or there, or, you know, certainly the, the loud and, and whatever. So I'm just bringing that up as a thought.
Yeah, yeah, we could definitely during construction look for other spaces, whether it was out on the patio, if that's, you know, in the first phase, or talking with Barb at the library, or some of the churches in, in town. I know Homestead Church uses our space once in a while. I'm sure we could look at that as well.
Awesome.
The last thing we want to do is not have a space for the seniors to be.
And I agree, you know, fully. But I've also lived in construction zones, and all of the things you enjoy can be less enjoyable when someone is hammering and drilling and doing all the things around you. So that was one thought. My other thought actually has to do, I love the extension of the fitness center. I, I am a huge advocate for staying mobile and physically fit and doing all of those things. My question actually has to do with the garage use. And just bringing to mind how others, including the city of Farmington, uses the garage right now. And, you know, making sure that we've got a plan in place for the things that we do in that area and how we plan to reorg that for ourselves because there's a lot going on in there, even though it's just a garage.
Yep, so the vehicles would have to be outside, other than the van. Obviously, we want to keep the van in the heated space. The other event that obviously happened even today is open door. And when we met with Pam and her team, we said, what we need to do is make sure we can get open door into the banquet room. Let's get rid of that north vestibule. Let's put double doors in there so they can bring their pallet, pallet right through those double doors, and they can operate out of the banquet room. So we made sure that that was included in the plan. And actually, today, open door was there, and we worked with them to, to get him inside and let people stand inside. And we, we talked to Nicole about it, and she's like, wow, that is awesome. And she did say, you guys are the best group to work with. So we did take them into consideration. The other big program that we use that garage space is for the secret holiday shop. So we would just have to reimagine how that is done. And we've done it a couple of different ways there in that building. So I'm sure with Missy's creativity, we'll, we'll figure out another way to make that happen. But that fitness center allows staff to do a lot more, not only for added equipment, but also for programming.
Now, deep appreciation for taking open door and some of those other things into consideration and being super proactive about that. I, I know Chief and others would hate to lose their rib tasting location, but I'm sure that that's an easy one to, an easy one to fix.
We'll find the space.
You'll taste ribs somewhere. And then the last part, and it's already brought, been brought up, is the reduction in cost and, and the timing. My, my only worry around that is doing the thing and then paying to have to redo the thing because either it got wrecked or by doing the one thing, we had to fix the other. So I know that all of that comes down to funding, financing, timelines, and whatnot. But as much time and consideration and care as we can take into not having to redo the thing we've already done, you know, that's just being respectful of the gifts that we've been given and, you know, the dollars spent in that area, so. Otherwise, wow, that's awesome. It, it's exciting. And I am five years away from being able to use it, so who knows?
Pam, thank you first for the presentation and for all of the insight and the information. It was, it appears to be a very complete concept plan that was turned very quickly, so I appreciate that.
Yeah.
To the advisory committee and all the input from all the stakeholders, thank you. It gets us moving in the direction that we all want to go. Specifically, as it, as it pertains to the design, I'm going to move that question second. It's been brought up about a single-phase project. Estimated timeline, if it was all completed as one phase. Assume everything else, like, you know, no supply chain constraints, displacement of our programming. Do you see this as being a four-month, six-month?
So the construction itself, so, you know, first, we need to take into account, this is a master plan. It's preliminary. So you're going to need six to nine months for the actual design, producing construction documents that can be bid. From there, yeah, I would say it's a six to, six to eight-month construction process. It's not a huge area, but there are a few complexities. We do have, you know, the garage. We do need, know that it needs to have its own air handling system. It's obviously, you know, unit heaters in a garage right now. So there's some mechanical work that has to happen in that space in particular. Yes, supply chain is an ever unknown thing. It's improved considerably in the last year. But, yeah, I would say it's a six to nine-month construction period if we were to do it all at once. So, you know, you're talking probably a year and a half from now.
And, and all there's, obviously, you have soft costs in there, but there's some, there's a 10% contingency built in.
Contingencies, yeah.
And then we're talking about an, an additional 10 to 15%. So, I mean, we could be talking about a reduction of almost, I mean, depending on where the contingencies go, right? Could be talking about 15 to 25%. I mean, you may dip into contingencies, may not, depends on the depth of the plan.
Right, it totally depends on what we find. The one thing is, you know, again, we have to remember that these numbers that are developed are preliminary because this is just sort of a concept plan we're pricing from. Once you get into design, so the next phase is to actually take this into a full design process, there you're going to dig into every bit of thing. You're going to have engineers looking at mechanical systems and what's working and not working. You know, K A did an analysis of the building. That's good preliminary information, but you'd get into the detail, structural things, all of that.
Right. We, we just always want to make sure that, because it, for whatever reason it seems like in the public sector, that, you know, the estimated costs are here, and then there's always, and the actuals are always here, right? They, they never go down, which is odd, but neither here nor there.
Hopefully, we're, you know, have been generous enough with the estimate. You know, again, some of the spaces aren't touched a lot. Some of them might just get more of a facelift than anything. There are some bigger pieces to this. But, you know, overall, like I said, the bones of the building are really good. We're not planning to tear out every wall in this place. I think the layout works generally pretty well. It's just a few adjustments here and there.
Yeah, from a design standpoint, I mean, I guess the only input that I would provide back to, to the advisory committee and, and to Kelly is that if we anticipate additional usage of, I'm going to call it the bonus room, right? The, the banquet room. The large reduction in the size of the kitchen, to me, was a surprise. If anything, if we're, if we're going to use it more, and the food, you know, the open door, the mobile food shelf moves in there, I think the larger kitchen seems more suitable. To me, my input would be like, make modifications to the two existing bathrooms that are in there to make them both single-use versus adding another one and reducing the kitchen.
Yeah, unfortunately, if they're single-use, we don't have enough count-wise, probably. It ma, it makes them a little less efficient, too. The, the kitchen is actually not a whole lot smaller. It is actually pushed out a little further than it was previously.
Sure.
And the, the storage area, so when I was talking with Kelly, you know, we could probably reduce that storage area that's shown up there right now. It's pretty big for the table and chair storage. Maybe everything just sort of slides to the north a little bit, and you get a little bit more space in that kitchen. Some of it is just the efficiency of the layout, too.
And it's concept getting to design, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously, all preliminary.
Yeah.
No, overall, I mean, it's amazing. Let's just, you know, let's, let's seek approval for the concept plan, and then we'll get into the nuts and bolts of how and when we get this thing done. So, that, I look for a motion to approve the proposed concept plan for the Rambling River Center.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve, second by Katie. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lean?
Yes.
Councilmember Porter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernatz?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item 12, Tac 2, is the Administration Department 2023 recap and 2024 goals. Julie?
All right, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We are pleased to present the 2023 accomplishments and 2024 goals from the Administration Department. This department encompasses human resources and payroll, city clerk and elections, communications, I T and liquor operations. So each of these areas has dedicated, talented staff working for the betterment of the city. So I will begin tonight by sharing items related to H R and payroll, and then each of the others who lead their respective areas will follow. Well, that didn't work. So for H R and payroll for 2023, the staff completed, as you're well aware, the compensation study. We hired 22 full-time and 54 seasonal employees. We implemented two new platforms in our NeoGov system. NeoGov is the online system we use for accepting job applications and doing other H R items. The first one was onboarding, which allows all our new hire paperwork to be done electronically, so no more paper. And the second one was called forms. This allows us to create online forms and customized workflows for routing materials to employees and eliminating the need for paper again. Early in 2023, we also recreated the Safety and Wellness Committee. This committee, led by H R, encompasses employees from all departments in the city and focuses on citywide safety, employee events, and wellness challenges. And then finally, during open enrollment, we were able to secure new providers for some of our insurances, which reduced premiums and provided more options for our employees. So looking ahead to 2024, we're still working to implement the new earned sick and safe time regulation that the legislature passed date last year. Later this year, we're going to be converting our payroll and H R, H R software to a new system. This process will begin in spring. Takes about five months until we have a conversion date later this fall. We will also be negotiating all of the city's union contracts, which all end at the end of 2024. And staff will be implementing NeoGov Learn, which is another platform that offers training that can be tailored to our needs and then completed and tracked online, so we can handle all of the required training staff need to have, as well as push it out to new hires to complete once they begin. We've also begun the process of hiring the two new positions that were approved in the 2024 budget. Interviews were held last week for the first of the two Public Works maintenance, maintenance positions. And we're accepting applications right now for the funding coordinator that'll work on grants that we're sharing with the Southeast Service Cooperative. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Otherwise, surely you'll discuss city clerk and elections.
Any questions?
I have none.
No?
No.
You're good.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you, ma'am.
Looks great.
See if I can figure this out. There we go. So I've been here about nine months. And so recapping 2023 for our city clerk and elections, we amended the peddler solicitor, like my pictures, peddler solicitor transient merchant ordinance. Working with the police department, we amended it so that the application process is more streamlined, adding more information. There wasn't much in there. One change that was a result of resident complaints is a time period when peddlers and solicitors can knock on doors. They may only go door-to-door between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday. Again, working with the police department, we amended the dog license ordinance. As of January 1st of this year, the city no longer requires dog licenses. We do encourage pet owners to maintain rabies vaccination and leash their pets when off private property. Moved old documents to Laserfish electronic storage. It's exciting to find those old documents and get them into Laserfish so that they are, we have a permanent electronic record and staff can access, access that. Laserfish is also where, when residents or anyone views our packets and our minutes online, that's actually coming from Laserfish. Coordinating data practices training with the city of Lakeville. We will trade off each time. And if we coordinate with another city, Minnesota Department of Administration actually provides that training for free. So next time, it will be here at Farmington. Provide assistance in agenda administration. I'm still learning, but it's nice to be able to help staff when needed. One of the first things I did when I started was I wanted to reformat resolutions and ordinances because when you have items that look consistent in your packet, I feel like it looks more professional for you. Then going ahead to 2024, obviously, we have three elections this year. The first one is the presidential nomination primary coming up on March 5th. For anyone who may not understand what that is, the P N P, as it is referred to, does not replace the caucus. The caucuses are February 27th. The P N P determines which candidates get delegates at national conventions. And caucuses determine which Minnesotans represent the parties at national conventions. Don't ask me anything about that, more about that, that's all I know. Following the P N P is the state primary August 13th and the general election on November 5th. I take great pride in our election system here in Minnesota. I don't think I could live in another state for that reason. And we have the best election judges that give such good customer service. So I'm excited to work with them this year. And then Laserfish, continuing to get documents from those old books into electronic storage. So that's it for me. If you have any questions.
Any questions or comments?
With the dog one, for clarity, the leash ordinance and the poop ordinance have not gone away, correct?
Correct.
Please to keep your dogs leashed.
We didn't touch that.
No questions. I have any questions? Thanks, Shirley.
Shirley, quick comment. I just, every department's important, so I'm not trying to just simply highlight Shirley. But the changes that you helped facilitate really have, I think, a very positive impact for the residents. And they obviously facilitate making our job a little bit smoother, too. So I just wanted to thank you for the initiatives you brought forward during the course of the year.
Thank you for that.
I have no questions. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Onto communication.
Okay, Mayor and Council. I know I have a lot going on on the slide, but I feel like that's what my life is. So communications, top 10, in no particular order, because they are all amazing to me. Currents, obviously, we got our new vendor, or not our new vendor, we did our new R F P for the same vendor, which is awesome, that they put another bid in. And we adjusted our publication schedule to get it out a little bit earlier. I really started using Bitly a lot, shortened links in the Q R codes. We're sprinkling them in the newsletter and in other places as well. Video production has been increased as each year, and you'll see in the later slide how much. Farmington Feed was reenacted, and Feedin5 was created. We're working on the yearly communications meetings and internet calendars for employees so they know what's going on, not just me or the department that's holding the, the event or program. 152 years of fire service promotion, that was a lot of fun. We did a lot of fun things with that as well. And our, I already mentioned, well, I didn't mention this, but this is my favorite, the new website that will be under contract with Civic Plus, and we're working on that. Super excited to make that easier for residents and employees to navigate. I created this Share Farmington photo card with Q R code. They can easily upload photos to share with us that we want, we can use in future newsletters and publications. And then just increasing our social media followers. So to explain a little bit more about the currents, so we signed another contract with Johnson Litho, three years with the two additional optional years, which is what we did with them before, moving the publication schedule up. Spring was released in January. Previously, it was released in mid-February. And then that allowed us to, sorry, it allowed us to move summer release earlier. And in March, so it'll be mid-March when that goes out, and it previously was in early April. Recreation had indicated that we're behind in getting the programs out because people started signing up for other people's programs because they didn't know what we were offering. This allows for the earlier registration. And our fold-out option also got moved from the spring addition to the summer with all our parks inventory. But we also have the option to add that to any issue if we see necessary. Really nice, it's perforated, you can pull it right out. Put it on your fridge. Okay, so I talked a little bit about Bitly. I think it's a lot of fun, and I've done a couple webinars with them because they have more than just Q R codes and shortened links. We are working on titling all of them to make searching easier. So if I want to look at data on past clicks and scans, I can see that. As you can see on the right side, it shows a little snapshot from December. The only issue with this is, it only gives you, with our plan, the past 30 dates. So I'll have to be diligent each month to track all these numbers and put them in a spreadsheet so we have them. We did brand the Q R code, as you see, to the right of the Q R codes tile. And instead of just having the black one or the Bitly one or whatever, you can choose your colors, and you can put that, and if you guys can notice, there's a little wave in the middle. It's our wave. And then we used our Farmington colors on that as well. Used it more than. Used it more in the Currents, used it on flyers, and then we're looking at those analytics as well. A top three was Holiday Lights, just online registration, online registration and a job posting. So I think that's pretty interesting as well. Video production, as I mentioned before, we have increased, as you can see, starting in 2019, we did 32. Now we're up to 60. That is based on the 25% that we get with our share with Apple Valley and Rosemont. And out of those 60, there were a lot of new things happening. We decided to do 150 Years Fire Service video, our Y-Farmington employee video, our Y-Farmington businesses video, Safety Camp, HBC is Coming, Park Improvement Survey, RRC, Improvement Grant, Police Pink Patch, this is so hard to say, Police Open House Recap, Fire Open House Recap, and then the EAB Infestation video that was recently released. Of course, they did all the meetings as well, which they're doing now. Our meeting numbers for 2023 were 33. Those numbers on there are not including any meetings, so those are all non-meetings. They did acquire some new assets that are shared between the three communities. As you can see in the one picture is the portable sound system that was used at Toys for Town. They also have a large portable protection screen and then an audio press box that allows for distribution of audio. And I did have to ask what that did. Basically, if we had like a press conference or something, they can all plug into the same thing and make it a lot easier. And then the Farmington Feed was restarted this year. It was created before I was here, there was 19 episodes total as of right now, and I have done seven. We decided to do a Feed-in-5, which is the shorter version, kind of like updates. You know, a lot of the communities are doing like quick little videos and we took the video part out. We're just going to do talking. So I have about five things each, every other week that I talk about that are going on in the City of Farmington. And I've done six of those since I started that. And that, I started that in October. And then, looking forward, the website launch obviously is super exciting. Should happen in April 2024. Right now, content prep and updates are being worked on by each department. So every department has to look at all their pages and say, if this is relevant or not, or we have to update the information there, or we don't, you know, need it at all. Because Civic Plus will transfer over a lot of that for us, but we don't want them to do work that doesn't need to be done. The reveal is scheduled for March 12th. And following that, all the, you know, time-sensitive stuff will happen after that, putting everything up to date and getting it ready to launch. We're hoping the podcast audience grows over time just by doing it more often. So by doing a bi-weekly schedule for the Feed-in-5, maybe that will entice people to try and listen to the longer versions. Our Excel spreadsheet, logging all content for the city, I have that content calendar. And yearly, I will meet with every department and then monthly by certain departments depending on necessity. And then, again, increased use of the QR code and look into SMS use and text messages because sometimes emails get lost, and if you get a text message reminder about the program or something going on would be nice as well. Yeah, I think that's it. I talk really fast, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Questions, comments?
Well, I think that's it, is, that, yeah, wow. That's a lot, very appreciative of your, everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Communications improvement is always huge, right? So that was a lot today, Justin. I, there's some things I need to look into that I wasn't aware of, so appreciate this.
There's so many, so many social media, you know, options, and I feel like everybody has their thing. Like, you know, so-and-so will use Facebook, but they use Instagram, and I use Nextdoor. Like, you have to hit all of them to get your message out to everybody. You can't just put everything on Facebook and your website.
Yep, awesome, thank you.
Steve?
Really, really nice stuff. A question for you, because I do get this every now and then. What is, you know, what is your thought on, you know, you can, I think you can get the Currents online, but of course, it's mailed out, a little bit more cost to mail it out. Is this a publication where you feel like residents appreciate having the paper versus the digital first?
A hundred percent. I've actually ran into people in the community and they commented on the fact that they can't wait to get their Currents. I was at the ice rink for, my daughter was doing a Learn to Skate program, and the mom talked to me for like 15 minutes about it, because I was like, well, I actually do that. And I could tell her some more stuff about it. And, you know, case in point today was Open Door, right? A bunch of people that attended today said they saw it in the Currents. And so, I mean, we're getting that message out to people, whatever the message is that we need to get out by people reading. I mean, people still like to get that hard copy and read it.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, my wife would be very grumpy if she didn't get her physical copy of the Currents, just for the record. This is all great stuff. I know we talk about telling our story all the time, so thank you for being the, one of the biggest vessels of that.
Holly?
They have all said all the things. I also like getting this as a hard copy. I appreciate all the effort. Social media all by itself is just a brain thing. So I realize that it's not easy, and yeah, it's fun, it's good.
And your comments are appreciated too when there's clarification needed, when residents make comments, so it's helpful.
I appreciate it, it is, it's a lot. We all communicate in different ways and we all have our preferred medium and, yeah, it's a massive undertaking. And it's, you know, but again, it's one of our, one of our pillars, right? Is constant resident engagement and continuing to get stakeholder feedback and just, it's, communication is a perpetual cycle, and so I don't think there's any such thing as over-communicating. And we, I think we're, we're constantly making strides to improve and be more efficient and meet everybody where they're at, so I appreciate it, thank you.
I've actually said, it doesn't hurt to over-communicate either.
No, not at all, not at all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. So for 2023, last year was pretty busy for the IT department. We played pivotal role in multiple city projects. Speaking of projects we were directly responsible for, some of the notable accomplishments include transitioning to a new help desk solution, which enhanced our support capabilities. This system enables us to monitor servers and end-user machines, exercise control over patching, deploy scripts, and establish remote connections. The improved functionality empowered our small team to promptly resolve issues maintaining a small minimum open ticket volume. In 2023, we adopted Phoenix, a physical security access system, introduced mobile credentials, and simplified scheduling for departments and their buildings. Collaborating with FirstNet, we refreshed city employees' mobile phones, leveraging managed Apple IDs for streamlined device management. We gained the ability to push apps and security policies to these devices using Office 365's mobile device management solution. The transition reduced support tickets and offers a more consistent end-user experience. Addressing the challenges with the city's Intranet, we utilized Office 365 to establish a new Intranet using SharePoint. We configured the browsers to seamlessly access and, or we configured the browsers for seamless access and encouraged departments' collaboration. Our goal is to transform it into a comprehensive information hub for the City of Farmington employees. The transition to the Xerox copiers, which initiated at the close of 2023, is nearing completion. This provides improved monitoring, minimized print wastage, and enhanced security. Additionally, using ARPA funds, we purchased CradlePoint routers for police and fire departments, ensuring stable internet connections for their mobile vehicles. Hiawatha Broadband Communications was able to bring online just over 2,000 passings during the 2023 construction season. A passing is considered a home or business which can receive fiber services. These areas can be found in green on the map for 2023. This includes extending fiber connectivity to five parks for our Wi-Fi initiative, or our Park Wi-Fi initiative. For those parks, we're in the final stages awaiting the addition of equipment enclosures and power outlets to those poles. To go with that project, the camera system upgrade in mid-2023 resulted in a more robust system to handle an increased camera count due to the park camera additions. This is already providing us better video quality, longer retention times, and improved analytics, reducing video review time significantly. We recently went live with HBC's 10-gig fiber connection late December, achieving redundancy for our connected buildings. HBC, or access to HBC's streaming app is now allowing us to start replacing our cable boxes that we have through Charter, which by getting rid of those is going to end up saving us a couple thousand dollars starting even this year. In 2024, HBC is looking at over 3,500 passings depicted in yellow. In yellow there is the majority of our parks, so we're going to be able to bring a lot more parks online this year. Our partnership with HBC also grants us access to the Minnesota Technology Center, where we can utilize a cross-connect to gain a direct 10-gigabit connection with Logis. This positions us as a high-speed hub for neighboring communities, looking for an alternate connection to Logis. Once HBC completes the equipment installation, we plan to initiate the capability to stream public meetings through HBC's public access channel. That should be in Q1. And lastly, HBC is taking over residency in the old Zen, or Zen Nails?
Zen Nails.
Yeah, the old Zen Nails location right next to our A Street Liquor Store. By planning to bring our, they plan to bring our liquor store online with HBC Fiber, and this will finally provide a direct connection to our existing network infrastructure.
All right, last slide.
So goals for 2024, interconnectivity with HBC Fiber is definitely a key focus. Aiming for direct fiber connectivity to all city locations, our IT staff will continue collaborating with HBC to achieve this. In terms of security posture, we emphasize continued training, phishing campaigns, and enrollment in Logis's Security as a Service offering. This includes security assessments, roadmaps, IT security policies, and vulnerability management. Additionally, we plan to implement a new password manager solution to enhance security and streamline end-user password management. At the heart of our department's mission is an unwavering commitment to providing an exceptional level of end-user support. We understand that the seamless functioning of technology is crucial for our colleagues to excel in their roles. Our fellow employee success is our priority, and we remain steadfast in our pursuit of maintaining a superior standard of end-user support. And that's all I got.
I love it. Katie?
Well, I'm just glad you had more than just the first slide because I couldn't hear what you were saying over the, I'm going to say this wrong, GIF?
It was making noise?
Oh, no.
Oh, the laughing, yes, yeah.
In my head, it just kept going and going and going.
Sorry, that was distracting.
Having trouble focusing a little bit. No, it was funny. No, I don't have any questions, this is, this is great. I mean, just, just HBC alone was such a win for Farmington, is such a win for Farmington. Wi-Fi in the parks, increased security across the board, it's all exciting stuff, so, thank you.
Yep. Steve?
Thanks for all your hard work.
It's pronounced GIF, just to make a joke. Yeah, very excited for fiber, like the rest of us, I've been waiting a long time for it. I'm excited to see it kind of come through, like I said a million times, the unconventional methods. Thanks for getting it done the way you guys did. Let's see where that goes, and I appreciate all you do.
Holly?
For me, the unsung hero in all of this is keeping everybody operational and secure. You know, we know, we know what happens when internet goes down in our house, right? Kids cry, husbands cry, and it's not pleasant. And so there, there is an element of that on a much grander scale when we're talking about the role that you play. And not second to that, but probably more importantly than that is the security component, keeping everything operational in times of trial, keeping everything safe and secure from everyone out there that is working to pull it all apart and use information for not-good ways. And, and here again, I just, I take, you know, personal experience into account. We know it's no fun when someone decides to go shopping with your credit card, but it's on a much grander scale when we're talking about our community. And I don't take any of that lightly because that's a lot to be carrying. And it's a lot of hard work and a lot of letters, numbers, and combinations that I couldn't even possibly understand. So deep appreciation for knowing all of that stuff and making it digestible.
Thank you.
It still catches me off-guard when you think back that we're not that long ago that we didn't have a, not we, but society in general, like didn't have a very robust IT department, right? And the work that you and Annette do like every day, it's, like, I don't ever say we take it for granted, but it's, it's, there's always something behind the scenes, right? There's always, it's the upgrade, it's, it's the, you know, efficiency of this switch in the past and the thing. And it's just, it's integrated into our daily lives in a way that I don't think a lot of people ever anticipated. And, you know, partnerships beyond just, you know, HBC. I mean, that was a godsend, how that thing felt, you know, fell into place. But, you know, community partners, you know, county partners, other cities, like how we're all networking together, connecting so that people can, you know, go to the T-ball event and log in and check the score from the dance competition. Because it's like, it's all the things, they just, tech pulls it all together. And something that I missed with everybody who has spoken through their updates is there's a shared passion. And I think that's the thing that, that we just really needs to have emphasis on it is, is every one of you carries a passion for the work that you do. It's not just, like, I don't nerd out over elections. You love them, and I love that you love them, right? Like, we all have our thing, and when you find people that love their thing, the output is unbelievable. And this, I mean, this is a celebration, each one of you celebrates it, and it just, yeah, I can't say that enough. I appreciate every part of that, so thank you.
Yep, thank you.
We hadn't even heard from Solinger yet.
I know, that's why I had to get that in there first.
Oh, here he comes.
I love my job. Good evening, everybody. I'm Josh Solinger, I'm your Liquor Operations Manager. And I just wanted to say that I am excited and proud to be here with you tonight because we get to celebrate all of the wins my team had in 2023 and some of the things that we're looking forward to in 2024. 2023, we had another record-breaking year. We had excellent overall employee retention. We raised over $26,000 for local charitable organizations exceeding our goal of $24,000. We increased community events and engagement, and we launched a new product line, gaining over $60,000 in profit in less than six months. So let's talk about the record-breaking sales. We were up, we were up over $400,000 over last year, and last year was a record-breaking year. And this is how we did it. We had low employee turnover, we have friendly and familiar faces, we have clean and well-stocked stores. We aggressively moved dead inventory and brought in new items. We purchased smarter, enabling us to maintain and minimize the effects of cost increases. We utilized our point-of-sale software data to forecast staffing and inventory needs. And we created an item request process that led us to many successful new products. Let's talk about the donations. We raised over $26,500 for the Due Days Teen Events and for Toys for Town and 360 Communities. We did this by setting internal goals and getting our team excited about it. We had excellent support through our community, and we leveraged our relationships with our vendors to secure great silent auction items. We also had great support from local businesses. If we were a little bit short, I would call many of my local businesses, and they came through without question every time. We had increased event engagement. Events are the most, are the least expensive way to build relationships with our customers and showcase some of the new events or new products that we have in our stores. We started a tasting with the Council Program in 2023, and that proved to be a hit. We want to do that again in 2024. We increased our vendor participation, and they're now excited to be a part of our tasting events. We increased pre-orders through our events. Our last one, we had over 30 pre-orders, which is insane for us. It's mostly just tasting and having fun, but we had actual orders coming from these events, so they're winning on multiple fronts. We moved exclusively to Kelts to accommodate for the higher attendance, and we switched from charging an entry fee for non-wine club members to an at-will donation to one of our fundraisers. to an at-will donation to one of our fundraising campaigns. And instead of $3, we were getting 20s and 10s just handed off. Liquor Operations, looking ahead. We want to hit $8 million in sales in 2024. Looking at our historic trends, 2022 and 2023, we took big leaps. And we want to do the same thing again in 2024. And this is how I think we can accomplish it. We're going to continue the strong sales growth. We're going to explore e-commerce solutions. We're going to research and plan for potential delivery options in the future. We're going to continue strong staff retention. We're going to continue beautifying the Pilot Knob store, because there's still work that needs to be done there. We're going to add new racking in the beer caves, allowing for more SKUs. And we're going to explore digital pricing displays in our beer caves. Who recognizes this picture here? Curbside pickup from Target. I'm doing it at least two times a week. Everybody's shopping online now. Forty percent of customers exclusively shop in person, so there's a 60% gap that we're not taking advantage of. It's an added layer of convenience for our customers. It allows our customers to browse our full inventory and enable more opportunities for them to have add-on purchases. We can also send targeted email campaigns with this e-commerce solution, and the e-commerce solutions will actually cover part of that sales or promotional cost. If successful, we will begin exploring future delivery options. So, this is the first step in planning eventually where I see this going, because convenience is king now, and I think it's going to be the expectation moving forward. So, we're getting the foundation set now. We're going to continue to beautify the Pilot Knob location. As you can see, there is a lot going on there. And I'm not totally comfortable being in there, and I know others feel the same way. It's hard to maneuver around. It's just not a real shoppable space. So, we're going to do a couple things in 2024 to help clean this up. We're going to provide, we're going to put new countertops. It's just provide a cleaner, more beautiful look. We're also going to add shelving in the beer cave to remove some of that stuff on the floor and get it back into the cave. And we're going to add more shelving in the back room. It's just going to create a more shoppable space for our customers, more comfortable to move around and check things on. We're also going to explore and pilot digital pricing in our beer cave downtown. There, every single beer vendor has a different format for how they put signs out. They're different sizes, they, they're just magnetized to the wall, so they fall down. It's just a pain, and price changes, everything. It's been a challenge for us. So, we want to pilot a program where we have a digital pricing display that sweeps imports, domestics. It'll just provide a much cleaner look for us, and I think it'll work, so we're going to do the same thing at Pilot Knob eventually. But we want to pilot that, we want to put it down, a Pilot Knob, and see where it goes from there. And we're going to leverage our relationships with our vendors to absorb most or all of the cost to get that job done. And that's it for me.
Holly?
I love how excited you are. Every time I see your updates come through, your, your final statement is always, "I love my job." And to me, you know, everything you've presented is a clear indication of that. Kudos to the, to the community members in Farmington, too, for taking advantage of what municipal liquor does for our community. It can't be emphasized enough that when, when you are thinking about these enjoyment purchases, right, you're, you're doing good at the same time. There's a lot that comes back into the community. The liquor store operates in a way that is supportive of so many different things. And, you know, our businesses, obviously, like as you said, they step up when things fall short. But the tasting events are fun. I'm not so convinced that people come because it's tasting with the council. I think they just come because it's tasting, but I'm there for it, right?
Yeah, it's an added benefit.
Yeah, so, no, good job.
Thank you. Nick?
Yeah, I mean, I love the passion, I love the enthusiasm. I love everything you've done with the two stores over the last couple of years. I think the growth reflects that. You know, for all the scrutiny people ask about municipal liquor and, you know, what you give up to get it, it's just, you continue to prove why it's valuable to the city and what it gives back to it. So, I really appreciate all the, all the work you do.
Yeah, thank you.
I love your team. You have such great employees. The retention doesn't surprise me. I guess, you know, an organization is only as good as its leaders, right? And so, that speaks volumes to you. But friendly faces, clean store, downtown specifically. I know you talked about some improvements needed at Pilot Knob. Awesome, you know, initiatives being taken there. Love the drive-up idea, also hate it, because then I can't come in and talk to your employees.
You don't have to do it.
Yeah, right, I, yeah, I get that option.
Every other day.
Every other. Every other time.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Wow.
My bad.
Every morning.
Okay. And on that note, Solinger.
Julie's like, "We'll talk tomorrow."
No. Truly, I don't think $8 million is going to be a problem. A, it's your team, B, it's a presidential election year, so we got this.
Yeah, right, right, thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I would echo everything that everybody else said. I think the mayor made a really good comment earlier that, you know, really with all of your presentations, there's a lot of passion and love for your specialty and what you do. And we know you love your job, and everybody else does as well. I do appreciate specifically with, with you, Josh, because you are interacting with the public pretty much, you know, that's the nature of what you do. And you're very receptive to feedback. You like it, you encourage it, you want it. And I think that's another part that, of course, you're not going to brag about yourself, per se, but I think that's a really key part of your role is to say, you know, "I want to take that feedback, I want to, you know, receive it, see if I can improve the operation." And that's a really important part, I think, of that growth year over year. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You own it, like you just own it. I, you know, it, it is so, it is so refreshing to just continue to see the level of energy, the passion, the commitment. It, it, yeah, it's, it is never in question. Everybody knows. Everyone that, that meets you, everyone that walks into one of our stores, all of our team members, like, it just, you embrace all of it. And, you know, to next point, like, not surprised, right? Like, you just, you just make it happen. And I'm curious to learn more about, you know, some of the options, the delivery, and, you know, the curbside, and the ways that you want to continue to grow and enhance the business. And, you know, it, it's unfortunate, one of those things, right, that, you know, it competes with the private market. Like, you know, we had conversation years ago about, if we're ever going to get out of the business, then was the time, and what it does to offset operating expenses. You know, it, it's, people, the general public does not realize the totality of the impact of our stores. And, you know, even from the email I got from Karen Brownwell from the Farmington Food Shelf, you know, over the weekend, again, thanking Liquor Operations for their continuous work and effort towards the fundraising, Toys for Town, you know, Due Days, like, all of it. It's, it just, it all matters and it all works together. It's not just, you know, going and buying the next thing, right? It, it all works together, and, and you own that, and you just, it's, it is amazing to watch. Thank you.
Very much.
Yes, you do. And we love that you love it.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Moving on, we have 12 Tac 3, which is our Finance Department, 2023 recap, and 2024 goals. Kim?
All right. Well, that's going to be a hard one to follow. Finance isn't quite as exciting as liquor store, so. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'd like to highlight the Finance Department's accomplishments over the past year and some goals for 2024. Sorry here, it's not showing up. There we go. The Finance Department is an internal service department providing support services for the ongoing operations of the city and plays a critical role in the stewardship of public funds. Every year, the department has the responsibility of managing the annual audit and budget process. Those two items take months to finalize. In January, the audit process for the previous year begins and is finished up in May or June. And by that time, the budget process for the next year has started and is finalized in December. And then, we start all over again. In 2023, the 2022 audit was completed, receiving a clean opinion. Clean opinion meaning there is no significant issue with accuracy or the reliability of the financial statements. In addition to the audit, the department managed the 2024 budget process, and in December presented the council with a balanced budget to finance general operations and a handful of capital projects. Capital projects can be in the works for five to 10 years before commencing and require careful planning. In 2023, the department implemented new software to generate the city's capital improvement plan document. The software is useful tool and centralized tracking of the projects by year, department, priority, and funding source. I did not want to go without highlighting some of the department's routine processes, accounts payable and utility billing, to provide a perspective of that work that is done. In 2023, the department processed more than 3,800 payments to vendors and processed more than 30,000 utility bills over the course of the year. Looking ahead to 2024. In addition to, again, managing the annual audits and budget process, the department will be converting to a new accounting system. We have been told by Logis to expect to spend 50% of our time dedicated to the conversion. The latest timeline shows starting the process in the second quarter and completing the migration in the third quarter of next year, or this year. Another goal for the department will be to update and strengthen the city's long-term financial plan. We've contracted with Ellers to prepare that plan, and they will, that plan will help us guide in funding operations and identify capital projects for the next 10 years. The plan will take into several factors, including changes in the tax base and projected inflation to measure the tax impact well into the future. In addition to the goals that have been identified, the department would like to further develop the city's financial policies, making improvements to policies that are currently in place and adding others that provide written guidelines for good financial management. Finally, it was identified in the 2024 budget that some capital projects will be funded with issuance of bonds. When a city issues bonds, it typically requires a bond rating performed by a rating agency, such as Standards and Poor's. The rating, which is based on the scoring of several key, seven key factors, which include institutional framework, economy, management, budgetary flexibility, budgetary performance, liquidity, debt and contingent liability. And so, that rating can change up or down to reflect the rating agency's current opinion of the city's credit risk. Currently, the city has a Standard and Poor's rating of AA+, the second-highest available rating. Higher ratings reduce the cost of borrowing. So, it's a goal to maintain, or even better, improve the excellent credit rating that the city holds. That's all I have. So, I'll take any questions if you have any at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Steve?
Thank you, Kim. It was a nice presentation. Keep up the awesome work.
Yeah, for the short time that you've been here, Kim, I think you made that pretty exciting, right? I mean, obviously, finance is foundational to the entire organization, so we appreciate all the work that you do. And, yeah, the maintaining of that, that rating is, that's huge, right? So, it doesn't go unseen, as, even if it's not as flashy, right? So, thank you, Kim.
Holly?
Yeah, I was actually going to say the same thing. I, while we commented and somewhat joked about how excited Josh can get about liquor store operations, I know that every person sitting in this room has this thing that just, like, lights them up, right? And certainly for you, it's, it's accounting and finance, and it's so vitally important to the long-term goals of RCD to have someone like you in the position that you're in. And so, just deeply grateful for you to be stepping in and grabbing all of the things. And I heard the part where you said that transition is going to occupy 50% of your time. And I had a moment of panic myself, where I was like, "Oh, my gosh, there's so much else to do. Enough she has to spend half the time doing this." And, you know, how do, you know, how do you work through, through that without the support of a, a team and great players in it? So, great job.
Thank you.
I'd like you to echo the thank yous, or the appreciation from them, too. But one question I had, I asked Chris this last year. Do you have an estimation of how big of a gap we have to get to AAA over AA+? Or is it just too hard to tell?
It's too hard to tell. Sometimes, too, with a B in a smaller city, it can be difficult to get to that highest level.
It's, it do, but I was just kind of curious what, what the distinguishing mark there tends to be and how close we are to it, but.
But certainly, having those long-term plans in place and policies, those things all help to make sure that you get that good score.
Thank you.
You are very enthusiastic about your work. Don't, don't, like, confuse anyone that's otherwise. And yes, it's been a short time, but you've come on with enthusiasm and jumping right in and making recommendations. And you would never know it's been, you know, the short time that it has. So, thank you very much for everything that you do. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we have 12 Tac 5, which is the UASI grant and associated document. Oh, I'm sorry, no, 12-4. I'm ahead of myself. We have the fourth quarter 2023 new construction report. Sorry, Jim. They didn't fall for it. I was the only one that.
Mayor and council members, happy to be here tonight to go over briefly the end of the fourth quarter and year-end totals for the Building Construction Department. Fourth quarter of 2022, we had 39 combined single-family, either dwellings or townhouses. The same quarter in 2023, we're up to 54. It's almost a 40% increase. Some of that, obviously, is due to the amazing winter we've already been blessed with. A lot of builders took the opportunity to get into the ground. The tail end of last year, got putting and foundation into the ground. But it also shows that we have a good product and also a streamlined process with our department in issuing permits. So, for year-end totals, we issued 148 new single-family dwellings. That's a combination of townhomes and single-family homes. We had one large commercial project that we issued, the tail end. I think it was third quarter, and that is the Emory 74-unit apartment complex. We've all seen that's changing our skyline. We see the continued work every day. This was a morning picture that I took when I came into work. Vida Ativa has received a permit for the tail end of their amenities building, so they have a pool that they're installing. They have that in, have it in the ground right now, and they'll be finishing it in the spring. Commercial remodels and alterations totaled right around 1.2 million. I did a five-year comparison, so our, our number this year was 148 single-family homes. You can tell that, obviously, in 2020, we had a situation that affected a lot of different things. But since then, we have just skyrocketed. From 2019 to 2023, it's just been an upward climb. I really, truly believe that that 148 easily can go over 200 this next year, so. In addition to the 148 new single-family homes and townhomes that were built in town, we also issued 2,672 permits. And this kind of gives just a little bit of a breakdown. The vast majority are building permits, roughly 340 plumbing and mechanical permits, and right around 900 electrical permits were issued. This is the one that I, I like to brag about a little bit. This is our department. This is directly what our staff does every day, and they do have a passion for this. So, we conducted almost 7,000 inspections, field inspections, 421 plan reviews. And when I do the numbers, right, right around 9.3 inspections every day each inspector performs in the field. So, between that many inspections during the day and also doing plan reviews and being available to the public, it is, honestly, it's an outstanding feat by inspectors in our office. Most of those are building permit inspections, plumbing, mechanical, about 300 and a half each, and almost 1,000 electrical. And this is just another five-year kind of comparison to our inspection activities. And you can kind of see from And you can kind of see from 2019, five years ago, we've almost, almost doubled the amount of inspections that we're performing a year. And it just seems that the trend is continuing to go up. Conversations that I've had with builders in town is that they're looking and actively looking for more sites to continue to build within our community. Some of our nation, national builders, we have some of their largest build sites in the state, and they continue to reinvest with us. So, if you guys have any questions, that's kind of a recap of the year. And I came in the tail end of third quarter, so been hitting the ground running, but if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, sir. Katie?
No specific questions. Great information to have. You guys are one of those boots-on-the-ground departments that we really appreciate and some unsung, unsung heroes. I knew I wasn't gonna be able to say that right, but appreciate all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Steve?
I would echo the same comment as well. I did have, one of the building inspectors had to come out to my house just to kind of do some work, and it was cold out, very professional, and just really appreciated the team.
Thank you.
Nick?
Yeah, keep running, I guess. Don't slow down.
Or sprint, right? Yeah, you know, I, it's interesting, because I think the public view of inspections is like, oh, no, I have to have this thing inspected. And, you know, ultimately, that's what leads to consistency and safety and all of these things that need to happen in order for, for things to continue moving on and, and, you know, being to the betterment of the community and into the individual homes. It's a lot of work, and it's gonna continue to be a lot of work as the face of Farmington shifts and changes and adapts and does all of that. But kudos to you and the team for kicking a lot of tail end and, you know, being there as, as people do take advantage of those certain pockets of time that they were gifted, where they can do more than what you thought you could do. You thought you might be coming into your slow season, and turns out, not so much.
Not so much.
You know, this is one of the main reasons that I had asked that we pulled this out of the consent, right, is, because this is a huge celebration, right? I mean, we, we're living in the time, and we're, we're able to go through the activities that this community has long waited for. And, you know, I, I just remember sitting here in 19 and looking at 34 building permits, and on a projection of 130, I'm like, we're, we're ain't even close to 130. And now they see it year over year and be talking about 6,700 inspections on 148 new permits. And you're talking 200. That could be 9,000 inspections next year, right? This is the first wave of the rooftops that turn into the work that's being done in economic development that creates the large, commercial, industrial, it, it just, it all, it all has to work together. And it should be celebrated. And, you know, yes, new to the team, jumped in, came in with a ton of enthusiasm, we, you know, we added a new inspector position, we've replaced through some retirements, we're just, we're, we're catching our legs for that, that second lap. And this is a huge win for us. I, I appreciate it to you and your team very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rodney.
Now it's 12-5 for you. It's irregular to do two-hour meetings, so I might be getting agenda fatigue. So UASI grant and associate documents. I tried to do this up out of my glasses. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you requests for, to accept the contract for a UASI grant and the associated documents and approve the purchase of the item we're getting with this grant. In March of 2023, we applied for Urban Area Security Initiative Grant, which is UASI. It's a competitive grant with $787,000 available throughout the metro. It's federally funded but managed by the state. We requested approximately $82,000 for a mobile IP video trailer, which is similar to the one that we've used on numerous occasions that the sheriff's department won't. We've used it at due days, we've used it at the, at the high school, and with the soft target critical infrastructure we have in Farmington, we thought that would be a good use for the, the, the equipment. There are about 30 applicants in the metro. And in April 2023, we had five minutes where we could go online, and we could convince the committee that ours was worthy of their funding. Again, we're gonna, we hope to use this trailer for about, you know, half the year, because it can, it can be out there for two months and just keep running on 20 gallons of gas. Anyway, in May, we were advised that our project was being recommended for funding, and in July, we got the unofficial award announcement. Nobody accuses everything of going fast. In October, we got the official award notification. We completed the online grant application. And today, in your packet is the contract to accept the grant, as well as the purchase agreement or the proposal to purchase the equipment in the amount of $82,000, $82,400. City attorney has gone over the contract, has no concerns. We've complied with everything that she highlighted that we needed to do. And I would just ask for the approval of the contract and signing of the proposal, and I'll answer any questions that she might have. Thank you, sir. Nick, any questions?
No questions, just a thanks for always looking for the grant money and finding it where it's there.
Holly?
No, I've, I, working with you due days, we've, we've seen what benefits the sheriff's department version of this has. And so I think it's a fantastic addition for the police department. I'm super excited that all of the time was taken and, and all of the work you guys put into securing a grant for this. And it just makes me happy to see these things come to fruition, where you, you get this tangible object after all of that hard work. So, congrats.
Me too. Katie?
No questions. This is fantastic. And, I mean, the world we live in today, right? Anything that enhances security is a huge plus, so thanks, Jimmy and team.
And it will, it will, I didn't mention, it will interface with our current IP video system, just like any other camera. Steve?
No comments.
First and foremost, I appreciate the awareness, the attentiveness to even the program becoming available, recognizing the need, submitting all the paperwork, being selected, going through the, the video process, the grant process, and everything. It's the, it's the due diligence and the steadfast efforts that continue to ensure that, you know, we're taking every opportunity that we have. And ultimately, it all benefits the community and allows us to perform our services at the highest level. So, very well done. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, we look for a motion to accept the contract for the grant and approve the purchase of the trailer.
Motion.
Motion by Holly, second by Nick. Call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, sir. All right, 12-TAC 6 is our appointments to boards and commissions for 2024. Shirley?
City Council interviewed applicants for the 2024 boards of commissions and is making recommendations that include, for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Kate Karen, with the term ending January 31, 2027. The Planning Commission, and I apologize ahead of time if I mess up any names. Planning Commission, Mitchell Snowback, Krista Teskey, Philip Winschidle, with terms ending January 31, 2026. Rambling River Center Advisory Board, Mary Garlets and Pat Hannan, terms expiring January 31, 2027. There is one vacant seat on that. And the Water Board, Michelle Wollers, with a term expiring January 31, 2027. Looking for approval for that.
Thank you, ma'am. And before I seek a motion for approval for those watching at home, Shirley did say that there was a vacancy for the Ramming River Center Advisory Board. Feel free to contact either Kelly or Missy and express interest. We do have a vacancy to fill, so we can do that. And we look for a motion to approve the appointments and terms as listed above to the Park and Rec Advisory Board, Planning Commission, Ramming River Center Advisory Board, and the Water Board.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Katie, second by Steve. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember Brintanz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lean?
Yes.
Councilmember Porter?
Yes.
All right, and Shirley, you got 12-7. Dakota County Joint Powers Agreement for Absentee Voting Administration Services.
So for council approval is the joint powers agreement with Dakota County, as you said, for absentee voting administrative services. Council reviewed the JPA at-work sessions on August 21st and January 2nd. The staff is recommending approval of the JPA, and I take any questions you may have.
Any questions, Nick?
For me.
Holly?
None.
Katie?
I have no specific questions.
Steve?
No.
I have no questions either. So we look for a motion to approve the joint powers agreement between Dakota County and the cities and townships in Dakota County for the provision of absentee voting administration services.
Motion.
Sorry.
Motion by Holly, second by Nick. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember Brintanz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lean?
Yes.
Councilmember Porter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, chief, it's on you, 12-8.
Last one.
Last one. Two hours, I love it.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Last item up on the agenda is the replacement of our next fire engine. Engine two is a 2001 and is due for replacement. It's our oldest fire engine. The Fire Apparatus Committee has been working on researching and demonstrating different types of fire engines. The committee developed a specification for the new truck that meets our current and future needs. The fire department currently has three engines and one ladder in our fleet. The ladder essentially operates like a fire engine with the capability of the aerial apparatus device. Our most recent purchase of engines was engine 11 in 2019 and ladder one in 2021. The specification for this new engine is very similar to both of those. With this standardization, that will help our operations. All of our large apparatus are manufactured by Pierce Manufacturing, with McQueen Emergency Group being the sales and service dealership located in Apple Valley. The new engine has a build lead time of 45 to 48 months from today if we sign the contract. No down payment is required to secure that build time, that build slot. Final payment is due at the time of delivery, and staff will work on financing options at a later date for that vehicle. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thanks, sir. Steve?
No questions.
Katie?
No questions. Thank you for the concise report.
Holly?
My, I guess my only question is, with the approval of the purchase today and the extended build time of 45 to 48 months, it is confirmed that, doesn't matter what happens in the next 45 or 48 months, we're good with where we are today.
That is, that is not correct. There can be certain price increases.
All right.
So we're, we're not completely locked in, but they don't anticipate any price increases, but there are some stipulations in the contract that can give them a price increase. So, not, not what I like to hear either, but we don't have a lot of choice with that.
Yep.
Nick?
Was I right in that correctly? The build doesn't actually start until that time, right? It doesn't, it's not a four-year to build a fire truck.
Right. Yeah, that we're just securing a slot, you know, down the road, basically.
Understand. It's quite a lead time.
Yeah.
Good? What was our lead time? Not when we did ladder one, but was it, was it engine 11? It was almost recent before that.
We have the tender that's on order right now, and I think that one was just over 16 months, but that's a different type of build. The ladder was, I think that was like 14 months. I mean, we've just watched them keep getting longer and longer over the last couple of years.
Any idea what has, I mean?
You know, some of the federal money, the federal money, people buying more fire trucks, staffing shortages, supply chain, you know, the mode, the emissions on the vehicles, that's constantly changing, so then they're having to redevelop trucks to fit the new engines or the new motors for the trucks. So there's a lot of different things that, you wouldn't think that there's that many people buying more fire trucks, right? Because it's not new fire departments starting anywhere, but a lot of different factors.
You know, the biggest thing is, you know, you know, good on us for staying on top of it, you know, for our sales reps informing us and keeping us apprised of the supply chain issues that, you know, we look at all of the things. I know some of our stuff is unleasing, some of the stuff cannot be, but just to continue to stay in front of it so that we don't get caught on a, you know, five, six-year window if something were to happen.
Right.
I don't have any questions for you outside of that. We look for a motion to approve the purchase agreement with McQueen LLC for the Pierce Velocity Pumper for 1,000, or $1,250,323 on Sourcewell Consortium pricing.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Katie. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brintanz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lean?
Yes.
Councilmember Porter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt?
Yes. Thank you, sir. All right, roundtable, we're just gonna go from the left. Leah, you're up.
Great. Per Mayor's request, I have a legislative update. If you, like me, had your catalytic converters stolen, you might be happy to hear that there were certain penalties and purchase requirements put on having catalytic converters, so you couldn't have a whole trunk of them, for example. So, and, you know, a lot of catalytic converter thefts have gone down, which is great as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Nick?
Thank you to the firefighters for the invite to the cold ball, I'll call it, I guess. A little risky driving out there, but had a good time, as always, even though I lost my voice within five minutes. Always a good time. And I appreciate everyone, everything you guys do, putting that together and celebrating all your officers and firefighters.
Holly?
All right. You actually said this earlier, but just for all of the individuals that presented tonight, I know I like bright, shiny things that excite me, and there are certain things that are more exciting to individuals than others, but ultimately, just an overall wow, guys. Truly, everybody's passion for what they do, dedication to the team overall, it, it absolutely needs to be commended, and I don't know, I'm excited for '24. I really am.
Katie?
I got nothing.
Got nothing. Steve?
Yeah, Justin, just a phenomenal event. Thank you so much. Thank you to all your team for all the training awards and the achievement and the success, so I really appreciate it. Shirley, I'm sure you were more than pleased when you, was it 39 people that signed to be an election judge?
Yes.
So, appreciate those 39. You may need more, potentially. But I know that there are a number of very dedicated folks that would not miss the opportunity to serve as, as an election judge, and that's a civic duty they do every time, so appreciate all of them.
Thank you. Lynn?
Thank you again, Justin, for the invite for the fire relief banquet. And I want to congratulate Bob Eibner for Fire Officer of the Year and Heath Walker for Firefighter of the Year. So that was great, and to see all the firefighters and all the other awards that were given. Special thank you to Neil Anderson and Midwest Bank for being a great partner in this community. They really do step up, and Neil is just great to work with. Thank you to the staff that presented tonight. I know it might have been nerve-wracking for some of them, but they did a fabulous job. I get to see every day all the wonderful work they do, and so it was nice for them to be able to share it with council and the community to see all that's done, so thank you.
Thank you. Shirley?
Thank you, Steve, for mentioning that we need election judges. And that, I don't have anything else.
Julie?
I did a fair amount of updating, so I'm good.
Deanna?
I feel like I did a fair amount of updating too, but it was the two hours prior to this meeting. I will mention that our comprehensive plan update continues to move along, and we're getting into the exciting part of the future land use, so we will be looking at scheduling a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the city council to provide some updates. So that will be coming in the, hopefully, pretty near future.
Thank you. John?
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. We had a small snow event this past weekend. We haven't had a lot of those. We've been insulting, but we had a snow event. Everything went fine. One thing I wanted to note about the public works maintenance worker position that was posted, we had 43 applicants, which was fantastic. So we had a lot of options and, and I think excellent candidates to consider. And that bodes well, because we'll be hiring another one of those positions in the summer, as well as a replacement for somebody retiring. We expect the well five retaining wall bids to be received some Uh, we expect the well five retaining wall bids to be received sometime in February, uh, so that's about to go out. Um, we are working on the Winter EAB project. That's a large-scale uh tree project that will be bid all at once this year. And uh as a follow-up to your action at the previous meeting, we had the twenty twenty-four street improvement final design kickoff. So that's uh working toward final plans and specifications to be bid yet this spring.
Thanks, sir. Kelly?
We're planning to open the warming houses and outdoor rinks tomorrow. Finally, the cold weather uh hit us and um we have a warming house at Rambling River Park behind Dodge Middle School. And then we rent a mobile mini at Disted Park. So like I said, planning to open tomorrow at four P M.
Our seasonal hires probably want to put in some overtime.
Yeah, we've we've lost one or two um since we haven't been open yet. Um, we fully expected we might lose some, but we have a good crew ready to go.
Thank you, ma'am. Kim?
Um, the audit process officially begins this week. We have the auditors that will be here at City Hall on Thursday and Friday. Fun begins.
Thank you, ma'am. Chief?
We have started our recruitment process for the year for paid-on-call firefighters and as mentioned, you know, one of the benefits is the great banquet, so. Anyone interested, you know, check out our website, check out our Facebook for all of our informational meetings and, you know, find a firefighter. If you know somebody who's a firefighter, reach out to them. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Chief?
Uh, in the interest of wrapping up this marathon, I have nothing.
All right, two hours for that. I like it. Uh, I'll make it brief and and I just want to kind of summarize because I know we've. We've had a lot of updates tonight, um, a lot of huge wins for the community, right? Huge wins for the organization and the team, but ultimately huge wins for the community and its residents and business owners. I hope people take time to realize the enthusiasm of the team, the authenticity of the team. This is a new Farmington. Like, we have worked and waited for so long to get to a period of time where. We finally felt as though the progress was really taking place, and it's been incremental over time. But like this thing that's coming in twenty-four is going to be unbelievable. It is a culmination of the work over the last few years. It is a testament to the tenacity and the drive and the grit of the team that is now, and I I couldn't be more proud. Today, I mean, it is just on, it's unbelievable. I I just, I wish, I just wish people saw more of that. Um, and not got caught up in so much of the the noise, um, because we do. We have an, we have an amazing amount of work. Great things that we did in twenty-three, it's going to be even better in twenty-four, and I just couldn't be more proud. Um, it's phenomenal. I look forward to it. Thank you very much for everything you've done and for everything that we're going to do this year. With that, we look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we're adjourned nine twelve.